May everybody please stand in front of the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The board has been approving the course of the open public media.
Yes, it has, Mr. Mackinon.
Governor will call this.
Mr. Bauter.
Here.
Mr. Backer.
Here.
Mr. Bishaba.
Here.
Mr. Rozinski.
Here.
Mr. Saya.
Here.
Mrs. DePinto.
Here.
Mrs. Riquilla.
Here.
Mrs. Krab.
Here.
Mr. Mackinon.
Present, closed please.
This evening, enclosed, the board discussed on the negotiation Savable Education Association's contract status, renewal of health benefits, attorney's contracts, on the student discipline, Hibbert Board sixty dash sixty-three, two thousand twelve thirteen, high school student discipline hearing, attorney-client privileges, denudal at all settlement, personnel, language or literacy supervisor, assistant superintendent's position. I follow, I want to clarify, the new assistant superintendent's position, supervisor of elementary education, and the interim director of special service, and an agenda item, and agenda items.
Thank you. Dr. Fannin, we have a presentation this evening.
Yes, Mr. Brown, would you like to come up? With our top ten students, this is, Mr. Mackinon, I'm sure you'll like to come up as well. This is one of our favorite days, we're celebrating in honor of our top ten students at the high school, and it's a great feat, so I'll turn the program over to Mr. Brown and Mr. Mackinon.
Okay, it gives me great pleasure to announce our top ten and recognize our top ten students. We're going to start from number ten to number one. First student is Jonathan Portillo. Not here, okay, Jonathan. Aretha Jett.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Mumi Intels.
Congratulations, good job.
Chelsea Marie Chilero.
Xena Shah.
Congratulations, good job.
Porta Benrep, Tony Wong.
Tony Wong.
Michelle Quinn.
Congratulations.
Shigam Patel. Arpit Chef. He is the salutatorian, I apologize. He's not here today.
Not yet, but he is the salutatorian.
And last but not least, least, is our valedictorian, Joshua Colston. Congratulations, guys.
Ladies and gentlemen, these are our academic champions, the top ten students.
Four hundred and forty-four, this is the top ten.
If your child is up there, please raise hands. I want to congratulate them. Good job, good job. Good parenting, whatever you're doing at home, it's working. And let me tell you, as parents, we say that we're not judged by our accomplishments, but by the accomplishments of our children. So congratulations to you all. Okay, pressing on the agenda, on the correspondence, everybody should have gotten a sheet on quarterly monthly technology and monthly maintenance work order reports. Anybody have any questions, concerns about those items? Seeing none, the minutes. The minutes of the regular executive session of May seventh, along with the amended minutes that were sent out the other day on the executive session of April twenty-third. Anybody have any questions, comments, releases, or additions to those minutes? If not, I'll accept the motion for filing, accept the minutes. Do you second? I need a roll call vote.
Mr. Bauter.
Yes.
Mrs. Backer.
Yes.
Mr. Bishaba.
Yes.
Mr. Rozinski.
Yes.
Mr. Saya.
Yes.
Mrs. DePinto.
Yes.
Mrs. Riquilla.
Yes.
Mrs. Krab.
Yes.
And Mr. Mackinon.
Yes. One of our top ten students and our student council representative, Tony, what's happening?
With only eight days left in the school year, with only eight days left, the school year is rapidly coming to an end. Tomorrow, senior awards will be held in the auditorium at seven P.M., and yearbooks, yearbooks have arrived and will also be distributed tomorrow. Senior breakfasts will also be taking place Thursday, and finals will begin on Monday. And on a more personal note, I would like to just take a couple moments to reflect, as this will be my last board meeting as district representative. First of all, I would like to commend the Board of Education and all administrators and faculty for the hard work and dedication to the Savable community. Unfortunately, many students don't get to see what goes on behind the scenes, and all the effort that goes into organizing the school and planning events, but I've been lucky enough to experience this for myself. As such, I appreciate it all, and the board has done. From pep rally to Friday night football games to prom and the season trip, my past four years here have provided me with nothing but unforgettable memories and lifelong friends. In terms of the education here in Savable, I couldn't be happier. Every teacher that I have come across has genuinely cared about the success of the student body. I always felt like there were equal opportunities for everyone to succeed, and I never felt restrained academically. For those who doubt our education system, you probably haven't met Arpit Chef or Josh Colston. These are some of the, these are two of the smartest kids I know, and their attendance into those, to their schools with a sentence rate of sixteen, eleven percent is quite an accomplishment. Arpit and Josh will be attending to no selected schools in the entire country, and their acceptance into Cornell and Swarthmore is a testament to the quality of education that Savable is able to provide. In short, the Board of Education has done an excellent job in providing us with everything we needed in all facets of high school life, and I couldn't have asked for more amazing four years. Thank you.
Tony, you're precise exactly to the point, highlights will be missed. Good luck to you and your future endeavors, I know you do well. Highlights, Mrs. Saya.
District highlights, we are pleased to share with you that Arlith School has been awarded a $10,000 grant from Seeds Have Changed to be one of fifteen schools and organizations in the United States to receive a grant. Coupled with our $5,000 last month from Lowe's, Arlith School is now a large stream of money to further develop ideas for the garden to incorporate their STEAM initiatives at Arlith. It has been a very productive year for Arlith School, since they also won the $2,500 from Crayola for their creativity leadership team ideas, and it's also one of six schools in New Jersey to receive such an award. In addition, they also won the scholarship for tuition and room and board for the creativity conference at Princeton in July, and its creativity initiative for the two thousand thirteen fourteen school year. The Samso Upper Elementary School holds beautiful beautification day each year in the spring and the fall. Their beautification days do not consist of just planting flowers and pulling weeds. The Samso Upper Elementary School takes beautification to a whole new level. In the past, students and staff have taken on a water drainage project to prevent water from running down the hill and going into the cafeteria. They've installed benches and patios. These projects would not be possible if it weren't for the Savable Board of Education's ground crew. The staff at Samso would like to recognize these men for their assistance each year. A big thank you goes out to Mr. Robert Holmes, Mr. Barry Prowden, and Mr. Doug Sink for their tireless efforts in helping to prepare the areas for installation of the patios and benches. These men dug long and hard through compacted clay and debris, which is all Savable is, is all clay, to make areas neat and ready for the students and staff to complete their tasks. Thank you. Congratulations to Savable Warmer High School senior Arpit Chef for being selected as one of the ten MyCentralJersey.com academic all-stars for two thousand thirteen. On Sunday, June sixteen, the Courier-News and the Home News Tribune will salute the accomplishments of the ten academic all-stars, as well as the other nominees with a feature story of the program on the front page of both papers. We can't wait to read all about it. And kudos to Mr. Edward Agulies, Director of Curriculum and Instruction, and Miss Sandra Paul, Director of Technology, who were invited to present at the thirty-first annual spring conference for the New Jersey Association of School Administrators and New Jersey's Association of Principals and Supervisors, weathering the storm of optimism in Atlantic City on May twenty-one, two thousand thirteen. At the conference, Mr. Agulies and Ms. Paul presented the Connected Educator, Leading a Connected Generation in the morning, and then presented a practical approach to leadership through the use of all available technology in the afternoon. Both presentations were very well received by attendees that included superintendents, special education directors, supervisors, and principals. Many of the attendees have continued conversations regarding both presentations by contacting Mr. Agulies and Ms. Paul via social media. Over the past three years, Ed and Sandy have been invited to present at the annual conference and recently at the, and recently at the above-mentioned conference as well. Congratulations to all mentioned.
Thank you, Mrs. Saya. Dr. Fannin, could you please take us through the superintendent's report?
Thank you, Mr. Mackinon. Section A, buildings and grounds, there's a use of a middle school gym for the Savable recreational park, a leprechaun shooting camp. Number two is the approval of the Savable Warmer High School junior varsity baseball field and softball field retroactively for the girls' softball tournament that was held. Any questions with those two items? With none, moving to B, finance, there were some transfers, bill list items. And four is the contract with Computer Solutions that runs our software for our budget and personnel package. Number five is the educational consultant we discussed last week regarding the redistricting. Six, seven, and eight are resolution in regard to upgrading the cafeteria computer system, making it more electronic. Number nine is the bidding approval of data services. And ten is the state of New Jersey's cooperative purchasing program. And eleven is, again, a cooperative purchasing program through the Middlesex Regional Education Services Commission, as well as the Huntington County Educational Services Commission Cooperative Pricing Program that we are approving, and we're approving the amount of taxes as listed on page four, number thirteen, in that resolution. That amounts to fifty-four million, two hundred and fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four, and debt and service, which adds to three million, six hundred and twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and sixty-eight. Phoenix Advisors are our advisors on certain professional services that we need in regard to budgeting and so on and so forth, the amount of $5,000 that work with Mr. DeAndrea. Number fifteen is our adherent consultants, which is Management International, which does a very nice job, thirty-seven, fifty. Number sixteen is our attorneys, which is Schwartz, Simon, Edelstein, and Celso, and that rate is changed to a hundred and forty dollars, now a hundred and forty-five. Is that correct, Mr. DeAndrea?
That is correct.
See, I paid attention. Number seventeen is our Oxford renewal rates, as listed in number seventeen. Number eighteen is the Banner Card prescription renewal rates. Number nineteen is the Horizon Dental renewal rates. Number twelve is our Health Plex Dental renewal rates, as listed. Number twenty-one is the Middlesex Regional Education Commission's cooperative pricing in the amount of twelve thousand, two hundred and twenty. You have the abolishment of, now, the next few resolutions is just for our internal accounting, internal documents as far as adding positions and deleting positions. So we're abolishing some positions and we're creating others, as listed. And they are, and number twenty-seven is the amended IDPA grant. Number twenty-eight is the approval of a submission of the amended No Child Left At The Time grant. And number twenty-nine is an agreement between a faculty member and the Savable Board of Education, as listed. Any questions in section B?
Dr. Fannin.
Yes.
I think the numbers, number seven, number eight are foot flops, I think the monitors are a few thousand dollars, maybe a few thousand dollars.
Number seven and eight, you're saying the numbers should be, one should be twenty-two. You're saying seven and eight should, they should be foot flops?
No, they're, they're correct, because the CPU, we're just purchasing the smaller ones, and not full CPUs.
So the monitors are also without an AC?
Yeah, special register monitors. They're not regular, they're not standard monitors, they're special register monitors.
This is for all, for all the food service systems?
Everything is for the food service.
I'm upping now on six, seven, and eight. Now, abstaining on number thirteen.
Now, six, seven, and eight is coming out of the cafeteria fund, correct?
Yes, it is, and you're abstaining on number thirteen.
The schedule.
Yes. Yes, those items will be funded through the cafeteria.
A question about that, you had sent an email about network costs, is that, where is that on here? You had sent an email, here's the cost for the equipment, then you add the cost for network costs, how does that work?
Technology costs, those are the, those are the two items.
Right, but is that in here?
Yes, that's item number seven and eight, those are the technology components.
Seven and eight are the technology costs, so this is all-inclusive?
All-inclusive, yes.
Okay, so when you had those technology costs, that was, it was these two, I think, so it was one number. All right, so there's no other costs involved?
No, following year there'll be support, support services. The NutriKids waived the support service for the first year. The following year, you'll have support services, and then there'll be a cost to the board when we actually do the online system then.
But that comes out of the cafeteria fund?
That also comes out of the.
Correct. Just to, I'm sorry, just to go back, I know we're talking to Sasha, I brought it, I have my cafeteria bill.
It's not in there.
I have no reports.
No, there is none, because you get the report at the end of the month.
Okay.
This was a special bill list.
Could you just give us, since I haven't seen them in months, what our status is financially?
Currently, at this point in time, we're running a deficit in the cafeteria fund. At this point in time, we are running a deficit for this year.
Last report's like seventy-five dollars.
They're not, the reported, the board secretary's report doesn't have that type of loss. When I looked at it the other day, I believe it was around a $25,000 loss, but there is a timing difference between the two, because the way we run our payroll, the payroll has not post, we have not paid the cafeteria staff for the last two weeks of May yet. So there's a timing difference. So right now, if you look at it today, it's roughly around a $25,000 loss, but that doesn't include the last two weeks of May's actual cafeteria costs, which hasn't been paid yet.
So that would increase the deficit?
Excuse me?
So that would increase the deficit?
Yes.
And why is that deficit?
For the amount, the amount.
Well, hang on, it's not a deficit, it's a net loss for the year, but we have a surplus in the account.
For the net loss for the year, so we have a $200,000 surplus that's been carried off.
So what's our net?
For this year, and I don't want to mix the two, because if you start mixing this year with your surplus, it's, right now, we're running at, currently at a $25,000 loss today without the last two weeks of payroll being paid, and we have over $200,000 in surplus in the cafeteria fund. So if you want to use the net, it's one seventy-five today.
So actually, do we have money to pay for this?
Yes, absolutely, the $200,000 that's in the reserve.
And we have a lot of money left over after that, right?
Yes.
So what's the plan with that money?
The plan is to use, hopefully not increase the cost for next year to the students, and start using the surplus to fund the cafeteria service until the point in time comes that we have to increase the prices again.
If a slow roll was to reduce the money, that's what it gets in there, too.
It's a slow roll.
Plus, I remember a couple years ago, they were asking for ovens and refrigerators and freezers.
We've done some of those things, not a lot. This, I mean, this is a request that's been on the table for several years. It brings us capabilities to have the online service, and then also allow the parents to start paying through the internet service and actually make payments for the child's meals via your internet prepaid things and things of that nature, and hopefully, when we go to that method, the goal is to start allowing other activities, so things at the high school that students have to pay for, instead of having to bring in cash, you can go through an online service, and it goes directly into those accounts. So this is just moving us towards the next generation of what's happening in the cafeteria service. It allows you to track the meals, parents can now see what their kids are spending on a daily basis, what they're purchasing and things of that nature. This is a complete package.
Is it for every school?
Yes, it's every school, so everybody's equal to that, we've moved along.
Is this the thing we talked about a few years ago?
Yes, and I, and if I recall correctly, Mrs. Riquilla, maybe September, October of this school year, were we doing something of this nature, and that's what prompted us to go back and investigate what we were doing. And as I wrote to the board, this, this was brought to every level of the people involved, all the staff involved. We actually had live demonstrations for the cafeteria workers, so that they actually got to see the product side by, well, I shouldn't say side by side, the vendors came in. We were, we were, we wanted to make certain that the ultimate end user was also going to benefit from this, and the feedback we got was that they were happy with it, and they really felt that this would help their overall processing of the student meals and things of that nature.
Is there a specific concern you have with it, or? Just as, because there is a surplus, or we're trying to use it for the, for slower and for other issues, they're asking, like I said, a couple years ago, they're asking for ovens, freezer, refrigerator, and that got pushed away for this.
But it does show you feel that this is higher priority than the freezers and the others?
Things have been fixed, we are repairing, we have purchased things, so, again, this is, I think, bringing the district to the next level that we need to be at, bringing the parents, the, the parents, the accessibility to see what's happening, to pay for meals instead of kids having to carry money, and things of that nature. It brings us into a much modern place to control things.
What is the cost to the parents? Like, is there?
Once we go online, there were several different methods, and those things we'll discuss once we have this up and running. I'm not going to introduce online payment until we're comfortable with the use of this. Hopefully, within four to six months, we'll start introducing the online payment method, and there's different ways you can do it. The board can cover the costs, the cost can go on to the parents, and those are things we'll start talking once we do the online system.
Even if they're not online, if there's not online payment, can the parents still check online, right, from day one?
Yes, I believe they can, they can.
So they can still see what's going on?
Yes.
It's a nice preparation for the parents once their child goes to college. Also, does this have the ability to, I've seen the systems where students have IDs, they swipe their ID, their picture comes up on the screen.
There, when the person comes through, their student picture will come up.
Right.
As we go, if we get a formalized ID system, yes, these are all things that can be incorporated. It can build, it can grow with the system and things of that nature.
This will enable us to keep better track of monies and, you know, recovering monies and those types of things. And I know, Mr. DeAndrea's the director of our food service, has brought, I remember demonstration or presentation to the floor on this system a couple years ago.
Yes.
And now we have the technology infrastructure in place, this is the next natural progression. And for those who don't know, the, the cafeteria pays for its own operating costs based on the meals and selling the food, so, and this is something that they've wanted for some time, and now we have the opportunity to purchase it, and I think we need to do that. Any comments, or anybody have any questions?
One other question, not related to this, but to the cafeteria, you said something about not raising the price for the meals, are, we're already at the maximum?
Well, once the new state rates come out, we'll be below.
So the state rates are going to go up, and we're not going to go up?
My recommendation is not to raise them at this point in time, unless when we close out the final year, the final, the final part of the year, something drastically changes. I believe we should be able to handle it at this point in time for the next year without increasing. I mean, we've been at the state, every year we seem to go to that state, I think it's time we give a little bit of relief at this point in time.
Just from a matter of perspective, since, Ms. Jennings, how many meals do we serve a day in all our schools and districts, kind of a rough estimate?
Well, the high school alone serves an average of seven hundred and fifty students a day. The middle school alone serves about six hundred students a day. The upper elementary's about five fifty a day, and the equivalent each elementary school, about two hundred.
So we're well north of 2,000 meals a day?
We're about four, over 4,000 meals a day.
So the days are tracking that on a piece of paper and pen?
Well, it makes it a lot easier to have a POS system, and it's over a chunk.
And it also helps with our tracking of our inventory of food and things of that nature.
It also, I would assume, ensures better confidentiality of who gets free lunch versus reduced lunch, and prevents stigmatizing the kids.
This allows the parents to do an online, our free and reduced applications, it brings us to the next level.
I did see the valedictorian give us the look of, now I'm leaving and you're not raising the lunch price, thank you very much. I missed you.
Dr. Fannin, we haven't raised our prices in three years.
Okay, sure.
Amitya, there's a large council receivable for federal base, federal aid, or federal subsidy, or no?
Yeah, but we get, we file, and we get our money on the monthly basis.
With that, with federal sequestration, there's no, is there any chance of losing any of the money?
I have not heard of us losing it, because it's on a per meal count and things of that nature. I've heard nothing of losing that kind of money. And we were just approved for the additional six cents. Several months ago, we, we applied, and we got the additional six cents also. So we're doing everything we need to do to get our money, and we are receiving it on a monthly basis. I believe between federal and state, we're roughly receiving about $105,000 a month in reimbursement from them, if I remember the numbers correctly. That's about the neighborhood? You know, again, the value of the meals served.
Any other questions from the board in this conference? If not, thank you, Mr. Saya.
Moving to section C, personnel non-certified is a retroactive resignation, a retirement. I would like to comment on a break. Diane Crepe was a consummate professional that I became very friendly with, as well as she helped us tireless times as a principal secretary at Samso Upper Elementary School, and I just want to wish her the best under the circumstances she's resigned, retiring or resigning at. So, moving to the next is an unpaid medical, amended salaries, as noted there, as well as employment of some power professionals for the extended school year, a transfer of a custodian, of a few custodians, and employment of a power professional and a computer technician and a custodian. Non-certified personnel, as per attachment A, you receive that, which is an attachment of all the non-certified professionals that we are rehiring for the two thousand thirteen fourteen school year. And that's the substitute list, as noted on page ten, and an unpaid medical leave for the cafeteria worker, as noted. Any questions on section C? Moving to D. I also would like to wish Ms. Elise Lewis a very healthy retirement, and I know she would rather be staying in Savable, but circumstances prevent that, and I wish her all the best of health and happiness in her retirement. I have a few, a resignation, unpaid medical leave, a pregnancy leave, a child nearing leave, another amendment to the extended school year program, as noted in number six, an amended retroactive salary for Ms. Delusha, a change of credit and or degree, as noted in number eight, approval of the summertime guidance counselors, as noted, approval of the following personnel for curriculum for this year to finish out the curriculum writing. And number eleven is the approval of employment of an IEP teacher for the summertime and the extended school year program, and there is a removal of an individual on the teacher substitute list for that same program. Number thirteen are some unpaid coaches that we are listing, professional days is listed, and these lateral transfers are just people that were moving from one subject area or one classification to another, again, for our records as far as the master schedule is concerned. As you can see in number sixteen, this is this time of the year, we, right now, I've probably hired about twenty people on this list, we still have about thirty-six to go, I'm sorry, twenty-eight and about ten, so we have about thirty-eight to go. And it's fluid, obviously, we get some people that leave.
It's roughly around twenty-five thousand dollars lost. But that doesn't include the last two weeks of May's actual cafeteria cost, which hasn't been paid yet.
So that would increase the deficit?
Excuse me?
So that would increase the deficit?
Yes.
And why is that deficit?
For the month, for the month.
Well, hang on, it's not a deficit, it's a net loss for the year, but we have a surplus in the account.
But we have a two-hundred-thousand-dollar surplus that's been carried off.
So what's our net?
For this year, and I don't want to mix the two, because if you start mixing this year with your surplus, it's a, right now, we're running at, currently at a twenty-five-thousand-dollar loss today, without the last two weeks of payroll being paid. And we have over two-hundred-thousand dollars in surplus in the cafeteria fund. So if you want to use the net, it's one-seventy-five today.
So do we have money to pay for this?
Yes, absolutely, the two-hundred-thousand dollars that's in the reserve.
And we have a lot of money left over after that, right?
Yes.
So what's the plan with that money?
Uh, the plan is to use, hopefully not increase the cost for next year to the students, and start using the surplus to, to fund the cafeteria service, until the point in time comes that we have to increase out of the prices again.
If Slower was to reduce the mileage, it's getting in there too.
That's a little more.
Plus, I mean, a couple of years ago, they were asking for ovens and refrigerators and freezers.
We, we've done some of those things.
Some at home.
Not at home. This, I mean, this is a, a request that's been on the table for several years. It brings us, uh, capabilities to have the online service, and then also allow the parents to start paying through the internet service, and actually make payments for the child's meals via your internet prepaid things, and things of that nature, and hopefully, when we go to that method, uh, the goal is to start allowing other activities, so things at the high school that students have to pay for, instead of having to bring in cash, you can go through an online service, and it goes directly into those accounts. So this is just moving us towards the next generation of what's happening in the cafeteria service. It allows you to, uh, track the meals, parents can now see what their kids are spending, um, on a daily basis, what they're purchasing, and things of that nature. This is a complete package.
Is it for every school?
Yes, it's every school, it's everybody's equal, so that we've moved along.
Is this the thing we talked about a few years ago?
Uh, yes, and I, and if I recall correctly, Mrs. Rakuya Ek, maybe September, October of this school year, were we doing something of this nature? And that's what prompted us to go back and, and investigate what we were doing. And as I wrote to the board, this, this was brought to every level of the people involved, all the staff involved. We actually had, uh, live demonstrations for the cafeteria workers, so that they actually got to see the product side by, well, I shouldn't say side by side. The vendors came in, we were, we were, we wanted to make certain that the ultimate end user was also going to benefit from this, and, uh, the feedback we got was that they were happy with it, and they really felt that this would help their overall processing of the student meals and things of that nature.
Is there a specific concern you have with it?
Or, just as concerned as the surplus, we're trying to use it for the, for Slower and for, uh, other issues. They're asking, like I said, a couple of years ago, they're asking for ovens, freezer, refrigerator, and that got pushed away for this.
But it does show you feel that this is higher priority than the freezers and the ovens?
Things have been fixed, we are repairing, we have purchased things, so, uh, again, this is, I think, bringing the district to the next level that we need to be at, uh, bringing the parents, the, the parents, the accessibility, to see what's happening, to pay for meals, instead of kids having to carry money, and things of that nature. It brings us into a much modern place, uh, to control things.
What is the cost to the parents? Like, is there no?
Once we go online, there were several different methods, and those things we'll discuss once we have this up and running. I'm not going to introduce online payment until we're comfortable with the use of this. Hopefully, within four to six months, we'll start introducing the online payment method. And there's different ways you can do it. The board can cover the cost, the cost can go on to the parents, and those are things we'll start talking, once we do the online system.
Uh, even if there are not, um, online, if there's not online payment, can the parents still check online, right, from day one?
Uh, yes, I believe they can, they can.
So they can still see what's going on?
Yes.
It's been a nice preparation for the parents, once their child goes to college.
I'm just not sure.
A little bit of online. Also, does this have the ability to, I've seen the systems where the students have IDs, they swipe their ID, their picture comes up on the screen.
There, there, when the person comes through, their student picture will come up. Uh, as we go, if we get a formalized ID system, yes, these are all things that can be incorporated. Uh, it can build, it can grow with the system and things of that nature.
This will enable us to keep better track of monies and, you know, recouping monies and those types of things, and have more of them. And I know that Ms. Jen, who's the director of our food service, has brought, for both, I, I remember demonstration or, uh, uh, presentation to the board on this system a couple of years ago.
Yes.
You know, we're, and, and now we have the technology infrastructure in place, this is the next natural progression. And for those who don't know, the, the cafeteria pays for its own operating costs, based on the, the, the meals and selling the food, so. And this is something that they've wanted for some time, and now we have the opportunity to purchase it, and I think, uh, we need to do that. Any comments, or any, anybody have any questions?
One other question, not related to this, but to the cafeteria. You said something about not raising the price for the meals. Are, we're already at the maximum?
Well, once the new state rates come out, we'll be below.
So the state rates are going to go up, and we're not going to go up?
My recommendation is not to raise them at this point in time, unless when we close out the final year, uh, fine, the final part of the year, something drastically changes. I believe we should be able to handle it at this point in time for the next year, uh, without increasing. I mean, we've been at the state, every year, we seem to go to that state. I, I think it's time we give a little bit of relief at this point in time.
Just from a matter of perspective, since Ms. Jen, how many meals do we serve a day in all our schools and the districts, out of a rough estimate?
Uh, oh, yeah, I don't have my report with me. Well, the high school alone serves an average of seven-hundred-and-fifty students a day. The middle school alone serves about six-hundred students a day. The upper elementary's about five-fifty a day, and each elementary school, that's two-hundred.
So we're well below two-thousand meals a day?
We're about fourteen, over four-thousand meals a day.
So the days are tracking that on a piece of paper and pen, or is it not?
Well, it makes it a lot easier for cafeteria, just a minute. It prevents overcharge.
And, and it also helps with our tracking of our inventory of food, and things of that nature.
It also, I would assume, ensures better confidentiality of who gets free lunch versus reduced lunch, and prevents stigmatizing the kids.
This allows the parents to do an online, uh, free and reduced applications. It, it's, it brings us to the next level.
I did see the valedictorian give us the look of, now I'm leaving and you're not raising the lunch price. Thank you very much. I did see that.
We have to raise our prices in the creative.
Okay.
Committee, are there's a large council receivable for federal base, federal aid or federal subsidy, or no?
Yeah, but we get, we file, and we get our money on a monthly basis.
With that, with the federal sequestration, there's no, is there any chance of losing any of the money?
I have not heard of us losing it, uh, because it's on a per-meal count and things of that nature. Uh, I've heard nothing of losing that kind of money. And we were just, uh, approved for the additional six cents. Several months ago, we, we applied, and we got the additional six cents also. So we're doing everything we need to do to get our money, and, and we are receiving it on a monthly basis. I, I believe, between federal and state, we're roughly receiving about a hundred-and-five-thousand dollars a month in, uh, reimbursement from them, if I remember the numbers correctly. That's about the neighborhood. Again, your value of a meal, sir.
Any other questions from the board on this topic? If not, thank you, Mr. Sack, Dr. Hahn.
Moving to Section C, personnel non-certified is a retroactive resignation, a retirement. Um, I would like to comment on the three. Um, Diane Craig was a consummate professional that, um, I became very friendly with, as well as, um, she helped us, um, tireless times as a principal secretary at San Sol Upper Elementary School, and, uh, I just want to wish her the best, um, under the circumstances she's resigned, uh, retiring or resigning at, so. Um, moving to the next is an unpaid medical, amended salaries, as, um, noted there, as well as, uh, employment of some power professionals for the extended school year, a transfer of a custodian, of, of a few custodians, and employment of a power professional, and a computer technician, and a custodian. Uh, non-certified personnel, as per attachment A, you receive that, um, which is an attachment of, of all the non-certified professionals that we are rehiring for the two-thousand-and-thirteen, fourteen school year. And that's the substitute list, as noted on page ten. And an unpaid medical leave for the cafeteria worker, as noted. Any questions on Section C? With none, moving to D. Um, I also would like to wish Ms. Elise Lewis, um, a very healthy retirement, and, um, I know she would rather be staying in Saro, but circumstances prevent that, and I want to wish her all the best of health and happiness in her retirement. Now, I have a few, uh, a resignation, unpaid medical leave, a pregnancy leave, a child during leave, uh, another amendment to the extended school year program, as noted in number six, uh, an amended retroactive salary for Ms. Delusha, uh, a change of credit and, or degree, as noted in number eight, um, approval of the summertime guidance counselors, as noted, uh, approval of the following personnel for curriculum for this year, to finish out the curriculum writing. Uh, and number eleven is the approval of employment of an IEP teach, uh, IEP, uh, teacher for, uh, the summertime and the extended school year program. And there is a, uh, removal of an individual on the teacher substitute list for that same program. Number thirteen are some unpaid coaches that we are listing, uh, professional days is listed, and these lateral transfers are just people that were moving from one, um, subject area or one classification to another, again, for our, uh, records, as far as the master schedule is concerned. As you can see in number sixteen, this is this time of the year. We, right now, I've probably hired about twenty people on this list. We still have about, um, thirty-six to go, I'm sorry, twenty-eight and about ten, so we have about thirty-eight to go. Um, and it's fluid, obviously, we get some people that leave, hire some additional people, and subsequently, that's the new list, that's on pages sixteen and fifteen. Um, seventeen is the, again, the attachment, that has all the people that were renewing from the two-thousand-and-thirteen, fourteen school year. And number eighteen is a substitute list, as noted. And number nineteen is my, um, um, commitment to the Middlesex Regional Educational Services Commission, Commissioner. And, um, there's one additional resolution, which is number twenty. The Board of Education has requested to approve the employment of Panya Monahan Rivera as supervisor of language arts for the district for school year two-thousand-and-thirteen and fourteen, effective July one, two-thousand-and-thirteen, at a salary of nine-to-five-thousand dollars to replace Miss Riley. Any questions with that section? With none, moving to E policy. Um, the district technology plan is being approved tonight, any questions? With none, moving to curriculum. Our HIV, um, reports sixty through sixty-three, as noted. Uh, the Board of Education will approve the recommendation of the discipline hearing that we had this afternoon, um, on a, um, a high school student. Um, number three is the adoption of the Envision Math Program, grades K to five, and a cost of three-hundred-and-six-thousand dollars. Number six are special services placement and specific services, as noted on pages seventeen and eighteen. Any questions on that section?
I have a question, but it's on E, you went too fast. Do the technology committee review this, uh, technology plan?
Um, we had.
Yes, we, we, that, that's.
With, with, um, Mr. Balca? The district technology plan did not the board.
The district technology, not the board one.
Not the board.
So no one on the board has seen it?
Yeah.
Mr. Syak and I have seen it, but we, we're meeting, uh, next week, two weeks, as a committee. We haven't reviewed this as a committee.
Would you recommend you?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, moving to G, co-curriculum. Eighth grade orientation is August twenty-ninth. Eisenhower Family Movie Night is June thirteenth. Uh, the Auburn School Creativity Fair is June twelfth. Saro Memorial High School, um, FBLA's, uh, student, uh, Lee Grant, uh, saying will be at the FBI National Leadership Conference in Anaheim, California. And, uh, the Red Carpet Premiere night, and the Truman Fox TV show will be, um, June nineteenth, as noted. Any questions with that section? With none, moving to H. Waiver of transportation, as listed. Adjustments in, uh, transputational contracts and routes, as listed in two, three, and four. Um, number five is an amendment to previously, uh, a, a trip to the Staten Island Zoo. And then the six are three trips for approval. Number seven are our, uh, bus evacu, emergency evacuation drills were conducted, the drills were conducted on those days. That concludes my report.
Any questions, comments, uh, from the board, and if Jen Ryan's able to open up the public for any comment? Hearing none at this time, I'd like to open up the public. Anybody has any questions or comments on the agenda, right as we just discussed, I will open up to the public again for any business that may come before the board. So at this time, does anybody from the public want to speak about any thing on the agenda? So please come up, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none of the public force, I entertain the motion to accept and file a superintendency report.
So moved.
I have a second from.
Mr. Rakuya Ek.
Roll call, welcome.
Mr. Balca.
Yes, it's a pretty high usage.
Mr. Balca.
Yes.
Mr. Bishada.
Yes.
Mr. Brodzinski.
Uh, I'll be voting no on page nine. Bottom, number eleven, on the appointment of Andrew Hopper, otherwise, everything else is good.
Mr. Syak.
Yes.
Mrs. DeBente.
Yes.
Mrs. Rakuya.
Yes.
Mrs. Strapp.
Yes.
And Mr. Balca.
Yes.
At this time, Mr. Syak, anything from the New Jersey School Board Association? What's in the house?
Uh, just one item, the, uh, Elementary-Secondary Education Act Reauthorization, uh, piece of legislation at the congressional level has been, uh, introduced by the, uh, Senate. Uh, NSBA has reviewed all one-thousand pages of the bill, and basically have said that they cannot, uh, support it in present form. It calls for significantly more, uh, oversight, reporting, and requirements, uh, by the Commissioner of Education, uh, and basically increases the complexity and reduces local control for school boards. So, uh, from that perspective, it's a, it's a non-starter. Uh, I can send more information to the board, the review was just completed two days ago, but I just wanted to give a brief summary to let everyone know, uh, where that's at.
Thousand-page bill.
It's a thousand-page bill on, uh, elementary and secondary education in America.
I'm sure that would be great.
Uh, and also, at Mr. Bishada's suggestion, I will be contacting, uh, the executive director of, uh, New Jersey School Boards to, uh, discuss the, uh, piece of legislation with regard to the increased requirement for evaluations for teachers, uh, and determine whether or not that can be construed as an unfunded mandate, and what if any action, and JSBA will submit.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion?
Committee reports, Mr. Sack.
We have one committee.
Wait, you have a committee meeting? Who met?
There was one.
Okay, because Bill and the Browns had a committee report last week, and we discussed implementation of several security issues for our school system. And what we're going to be doing is, after we find out what amounts of money are left in surplus at the end of the year, we'll take a certain amount of that money and implement, uh, we'll direct the administration to implement certain new procedures and equipment into the district. Thank you.
I have a committee report, I have a question.
Okay, uh, so with none of the committee reports, discussion, Mr. Balca.
I just have two questions. One, go back to the agenda, number seven, this last item, evacuation drills.
Page.
The last page, same thing. These are all done at the end of the year, are they done at the beginning of the year, too? Why are these done so late?
You do them twice a year, once in October, and once again, twice.
What, what's the value of doing them as we're leaving school? Like, why don't you do these sooner? Is, is this, like, the date that we're given to do it, or?
Normally, we run them, uh, once in October, which is, um, around five weeks in, and then we do them again, uh, May, June, we, uh, Mrs. Shadlock tries to schedule them with all the principals, so it fits within. You sometimes get this, uh, change, like, May sixth into June, because they're doing field day or trips or foot trips and things like that.
But we do do them early in the year.
Yes, we do it in October. But we have to do it by October, I believe it's by October twenty-ninth. Definitely by October, the twenty-ninth.
And have to be reported to the state, and also, this is, other than the fire drills and the lockdown drills and everything else that's gone through.
Another question, I was at, um, a sports banquet, and in the budget, we had code, we had two assistant coaches, one for bowling and one for golf, and I was informed that we have not posted those positions. Is there a reason we haven't posted them?
I don't know.
Can you look into that, or I want you to do them?
Bowling and what?
Bowling and golf, we had created those positions in the last budget.
That's distance, right?
Right.
Okay. Unless there's any else to discuss, at this time, I'd like to open up the public for any business that may come before this board. If you have any questions or comments, ma'am, please come up, state your name and address for the record.
Sorry, your question?
Uh, microphone, please.
Okay, thanks.
So the camera can get you on the air.
Hi, my name is Alana Winston, can you hear me?
You can pull the mic down closer to you. Okay, there you go.
My name's Alana Winston, you said my address also?
Yes.
Uh, sixteen Winkler Road, Saro. And, um, my concern is that school is starting September sixth, which happens to be the second day of a very important Jewish holiday. So I wanted to find out if that was able to be changed, and if not, why?
Anybody have a comment? I can't do the schedule.
Yeah, the sixth is a Friday, Rosh Hashanah, I believe, is the fifth into the sixth, correct?
Um, actually, it starts the night before, so it starts the fourth, and it's over sundown on the sixth.
We always close for one. Traditionally, we usually close for one.
You always close one, then.
Right, because school's starting on the second day.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, we had a public, um, discussion about the calendar, and usually when we formulate the calendar, we have input from, um, you know, the public, the staff, teach troops, and no one had, had brought that up. I, I know ideally, when we put a schedule together, we try to do our best to honor everything, um, you know, and it's, sometimes it's, it's not the easiest thing to do. Uh, especially this year, one place will result of what happened, um, when we had to amend our schedule, and that kind of fell on some holidays, too, that some people took, you know, some, some concern about. But I can tell you right now, the schedule has been approved, um, and it's, it's unlikely to change.
Yeah, the rationale for the, because it seems odd coming back on a Friday, but with the rationale for, for the Friday was like, like Mr. Macdonald indicated, we always given off only one day for Rosh Hashanah, so we never really gave, you know, thought to the second day being a, a holiday, because it's always been a school day. And we thought about bringing everyone back on Friday, because that first day tends to not always be a productive day, because they're filling out cards and, you know, handing out books, and we thought, when we get all those administrative tasks aside, then the parents can go out shopping for the kids over the weekend for anything they might need, and then Monday, start the school year fresh with all those things behind them. So that was kind of the, the thought process that went into it.
My concern is my son's going to miss the first day of kindergarten, and my daughter is going to miss her first day in, you know, the second grade, and I'm going to be behind while the other parents have filled out their paperwork. You know? That, that was my concern.
And certainly, what you could do is, um, um, you'll know who your teacher is, we can certainly give you all that information, and you can, you know, obviously fill that out. Unfortunately, we only give one day, and it's always been that way. We don't want the year to go too late, we don't want the school year to go too late into the, into June. That's always been our concern, especially what happened last, this year.
Yeah.
We're real concerned about, God forbid, another October like we've had for the last two years. And, um, it's, was in the back of our mind. We did wrestle with whether or not to, um, have Friday off or not. And I understand your, your predicament, and, um, we, like we said, we try to take in every single issue, and it's just very hard to try to take them all in. We just wish to stay upon, just tell us what to do and what not to do, but nobody's going to do that, you know? And just have one uniform calendar, and that would make life a lot easier, but nobody wants to do that. And that's just because of these kind of reasons, because you can't make everybody happy. It's just impossible.
Of course. I, yeah, I did some research, and when, um, other districts in our area are starting, you know, South River, and all, you know, just the neighboring towns, and they're all starting on the ninth. Um, but I did notice on our calendar, it says, you know, teachers have off Thursday for the holiday. So the teachers are getting a day off, but not the students.
No, the students, the, the students don't come in till that Friday.
Right, oh, so you've just pushed it.
Yeah, I just, we pushed everybody to the, yeah, no.
Okay.
We're not doubling up. No, you have one day off, Rosh Hashanah, but, so we always give the first day of Rosh Hashanah.
Right.
And, and, you know, I, I kind of know that it's a very important holiday, despite the people waiting. I do know it's a very important holiday, and we try to accommodate that, but we usually give the first day. So everybody's off, the school's closed.
Right.
The district is closed on that Thursday. Friday, it's an unusual thing, because Rosh Hashanah is very early this year. So it makes it even more difficult. We like it when they're on the, on the weekends, makes it a little bit easier. Unfortunately, that's not happening. You're, no, the kids don't like it, because they, you know, it's, it's a little bit easier, but we, we did the best we could. And it's, it's an odd, it's an odd schedule this year. It's an odd schedule.
Absolutely. I had to ask, my kids will be staying home, but that's, that's what I've decided. But I just had to ask.
And it's an excused absence, and certainly, what we could do for you, if you want, I'm sure, which school is your child?
Wilson.
Wilson School, you can ask Ms. Davis, I'm sure she can get you that information in the summer. So this way, you can fill out whatever you need, and this way, when children come back in, don't have their books or whatever, this way, you can get a little jump on it.
Okay.
And I'd like to add that, we, when we have our discussions in February, March, April, it's not just one meeting, it's a meeting, and then we discuss it again, we listen to, to, um, the parents and the community, and we go back a few more times, and then find, make a final decision.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the public like to speak?
Good evening, good evening, my name is Stanley Zinarski, thirty-five Stevenson Street, in the Parley section of Saro. Uh, the topic I'd like to bring up tonight, uh, is safety. I'm very safety cautious and concerned with the borough crossing guards. Uh, I've seen the borough change in many, many years, as far as, uh, traffic and intersections. The intersection that I'm concerned about is right here, in Washington Road and Erston Road. It's changed so much that we're dealing with sixteen lanes of traffic. Uh, at seven o'clock, seven fifteen, we only have two crossing guards working that major intersection. They are dealing with buses, they are dealing with commuters, they are dealing with left turns. They even have traffic islands in the middle of the intersections. The traffic, the crossing guards are doing an outstanding job, but their, the equipment that they're using is antiquated to me. What I did is print out some handheld stop signs that they do have now, instead of the paddles that they're currently using. These are LED paddle signs. Uh, they're so, they're rechargeable, you could plug them in at night, and take them the next day. Even when you put the sign down, the sign goes off by itself. When they hand their hands back up, the signs go on. At a major intersection like this, we're also dealing with different seasonal times, and a lot of times, it's dark in the morning, it's, because they have season changes. So something I feel, before something happens, this has to be addressed. I didn't print out enough of copies for everybody on the board to take a look at these, and, uh, give us your thoughts, back.
Thank you.
All right, that's the only thing I got to say.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Well, just so you know, we'll look into it.
Yeah, I'll do that.
Mr. Bishada, you had a comment?
Yes, I, I agree what you're talking about with the, the sign. As an example, I'll give you, I came through at one oh nine this afternoon from up Washington Road, and what happened is, not all of our students, but some of our students, just walk right out into traffic. And there may be an issue where we may have to have a crossing guard there for the early dismissal, which this coming year will be at two, two-twenty-eight. Uh, it's something that, I think what happened is, to go along with this, I think what we'll have to do is get Mr. Bart Linsky involved with this, because he's the director of, uh, safety, Sergeant Bart Linsky from the Police Department. We'll, I think, if I'm correct, the board will refer this to him.
Yes, and also, the, also the council, you know, they, they fund the crossing guards, and I, I like these signs.
They all, like I said, they're doing outstanding job, but we were just talking about the cafeteria, has so much sophistication going on, and of course, the darkness, all the paddles filed.
Right. Yeah, and one of the problems, the way the town is designed, you know, we have two schools, uh, three schools act on the same road, increases traffic, you have kids driving the school, and you, and you got commuters parking on Houston Road, and I understand.
But it didn't go with four-lane intersection, it's sixteen lanes.
Yeah, I appreciate you bringing this up, this is interesting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the public like to speak? Seeing none, I'd like to make a, uh, a quick, uh... Second.